We do have a quorum. Take a motion to approve the agenda in the minutes.
So move.
I'll second that motion. I'll favor I. I oppose. Alright. Morning, Rich. Morning.
We had a weekend of snow removal, but. Banded up our bridges and move on. Equipment issues, but. But then we're self inflicted issues. So um. Have for you the resolution for the bridge project. If it's on over El Creek. It's a precast deck with a.
That's one of the decks.
The decks, everything's good. It's got a gap in there and it's overall creepy. We gotta do some pile repairs. I think kind of discussed this a while ago and I never got back on the agenda for it. The the bid is from. Min turn for the amount of two hundred nine thousand two hundred six dollars. Surprisingly high for what we anticipated the work to be. However. We're finding that in any structure work in the last two to three years has been trending higher, a lot higher than anybody's anticipated. I think a lot of it has to do with the amount of work out there. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of work out there. And now more than ever, there's hard, it's hard to find employees to work. So. The estimate we had was about eighty thousand dollars less than that. So it's a significant increase, but I don't know with with the dewatering they got to do to do the pile repairs and everything else. I don't know what they're bidding and the mobil, the mobilization was higher than we thought. And so was the. What we would call the. The repair, the, I want to call it a temporary stream diversion because they do have to copper dam up and stuff like that. So. Those were basically the two items that were extremely high. And I think that's just because there's a lot of unknowns when we get into water. So I guess if we want to get this done, and we should, I think we go ahead and and accept and approve this project. To award it to Min turn for two hundred nine thousand two hundred six dollars eighty cents.
And when is the start date on that?
Ah, I didn't look at the start date, but it'll be. I should book, but.
Somewhere between planning and harvest.
Probably, I mean, it's for this next construction season. And I guess I should have, I should have grabbed that information.
No, it's fine. I just, I know we gotta take them all and get them, but.
Yeah, we're gonna keep the, but the, I think that one, I think leaving open throughout the whole project. I think it's one lane because we're doing everything underneath, most everything underneath. And then when we get to the top, we just have to re- put grout back in the joints on top. So. I wanted to leave the bridge open, at least for partial width, because we only are doing work underneath. So. There'll be traffic control and stuff that'll, I think we're gonna have signal lights on that one. Or the half way. So if I, if I remember correctly, we were gonna leave that open to, to traffic and work underneath.
Okay.
It's not gonna get far equipment through it.
No.
But trucks and cars, the most normal width that fit in a lane might be able to cross.
This, that's not too bad of an area for getting around in miles to.
Right.
Someone like right, three ninety, some of those guys gotta go eight miles to.
Yeah, right.
So the resolution I'm bringing is the approval of the other pre- bridge repair project and for the engineer to authorize, authorize the engineer to sign for the contract to dock express. So.
So is there a motion to approve the resolution for the bridge and allow the engineer to sign the contract?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I will second that motion. Any other discussion, huh? None, no, roll call vote. So maybe, stone, I, Lowberg is absent.
You have it?
Two hundred thousands better than a million for a bridge.
Well, it's, 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 it's work that we've done before on other bridges, but there's so much water in here. We don't have the. I would say it would take us a lot of time and effort to try to dewater anything and to try to put sheet filing. I just don't. We can do a lot of things with our own crews, but I just think keeping our guys out of that kind of water is, you know, we do it on a small stream. That's only six inches deep and you can. This elk creek is always weathering anything. It's just probably more. It's easier to have somebody else do it. Of course, we need our bridge funding to do it.
If we don't do it, it's gonna get worse.
Yeah, that joint gets wider.
That we lose those, that joint, those embankments or whatever.
Well, it's, it's not a safe thing in the middle to have that gapped, but it introduces salts and stuff to the abutments. And we, it's a good bridge right now. You know, it, it's, you look back at the construction practices and somebody will say that to us fifty years from now too, why we did what we did, but. Why you build a concrete precast deck on top of wood piles? You know, you just don't ever figure out why, but it's whatever the budget can take at that time. Would piles last a long time, but sooner or later, they, if they're not treated properly, I mean, the treatments that they put on the creosol and whatever else that are in them, they break down after a while. And. A lot of it has to do with ice freezing thaw gets in the pores of that wood and it just. Keeps working its way into it.
It'll get a lot of life. I mean.
There's, there's nothing wrong with wood piles, but. Steel piles seem the last, I mean, you still have the issue of steel pile and paint rust. They're gonna, yeah, but so anyway, appreciate that. We can get this project into dock express and get that lined up. I don't, other than that, I sent out the freeborn letter this morning. I just made a couple modifications in the end of it. Like you guys said, I asked about. Any future repairs to the.
Drainage portion that I.
I called him last week on Friday and I said, what, what are you guys really looking for? Because I said, the biggest concern the county has. Is the system, the drainage systems haven't really been tested properly with any rain. It was a dry year. And what they need it for, they need this letter so they can close out the, the construction portion of the project. So they can close their books for the year. And get things buttoned up. They're still here. For repairs or anything else that come up. And so that's why we put that electric sentence in there to say, hey, look, we're not gonna, we're still gonna hold you responsible for any repairs that. May or may not, or that may show up.
Subject.
In locations where you guys were crawling over time or whatever. So we don't want to, you know, I think it's fair to. To say that if something happens and it's not where they've been working, they aren't responsible for it. But if there's any question or any doubt, but what they. Use crane crawls and stuff like that for that they fix them. And I don't think they're trying to get out of that at all.
Right.
They just need to close out their, their main projects they can get moving.
Oh, it sounds good to me. I just, like I say, loans are kind of covered on that end. So see what, a spring, the spring, the ring and. If anything, side of fails.
And Jack, I don't know if they, if it needs to be reported on, I don't know.
That's on a.
So I emailed you guys a letter if you guys want to print it out and figure out, sign it or however you guys want to handle it.
So I'll take a motion to approve the letter to XO Energy regarding the. Freebornland project road drainage agreement.
Make a motion.
Right, a motion, I'll second it. Any other discussion on it? Hearing none, I'll favor I, I oppose.
That's really all I have for you for today. I know the weather is gonna be a little warmer this week and it's gonna rain. We'll do what we can with gravel roads.
We didn't, we didn't. Right away that night. I mean, it's supposed to go down like nineteen degrees.
We, we, we went out of the gravels this week just to, or last week during the snow event. The goal was not to wing any snow off the road, knowing the temperature, we get it warm. So we wanted to get the roads somewhat cleared. So we wind rode everything to the shoulders. If there is rock, because the, the snow was a little sticky, if the rocks there, we want to try to pull that rock back into the road again. And then. Hopefully the rain will get it in there. We'll freeze it back in where it needs to be and maybe we'll stay cold, but I'm not gonna hold my breath on that. So. But that was the whole intent going on in gravels. And there were some spots that. You know, where the, the farm sites are paying, which where the wind came from, that it got a little tricky to drive through. So. Not everything needed to be plowed, but it was a good start to the season, I guess. Get some of the newer people familiar with their routes and their equipment so that when we do get. The big events, they're more ready than they were before.
Get a little better idea.
Right, so.
Yeah, cause you have a couple new ones.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else for Rich?
Just, we already chatted a little bit about this. We had a couple complaints about people shoving across, snow across the road and leaving the roads tore up. The process of doing that, you know, spinning around, being gravel ruts with the loose roads right now. And I don't know if it's something we should, you know, you can check with other counties with, see what their. Wheat recommendations are.
Our snow ordinance here states that you're not to deposit snow on the road or the shoulder. What happens is sometimes people will push a lot of their driveway onto the road. And not clean up after themselves. And you've got chunks of snow on the road. I know that some counties, I want to think Mitchell County says, don't deposit anything in the right of way. What you have to remember is if you're pushing snow across the road in the ditch, you're filling that ditch up and it leaves no room for. Snow from the road. So it's gonna pile up a lot quicker. But the biggest thing is you leave them, you're not cleaning up after yourself by doing that. And if it's a wetter snow and it freezes, other vehicles hit that. It causes damage to other vehicles. There have been instances in the past where people leave piles of snow in the middle of the road. Knowing the plow is gonna come and sometimes they would freeze into a solid chunk. And that's not good for. The traveling public or even our equipment because if it freezes solid before we get to it, we could. Break and bend some stuff. And it's not good for our drivers if they're expecting to not hit something like that or they're. Maybe thinking it's nice, nice, light fluffy snow and they hit it hard, we're gonna break something. And so we would rather not see the snow across the road at all. And I know we've had some talking to some residents in the past about. Not doing it all together because I would prefer they don't put it right away at all. There's plenty of room most time on most people's property, keep it on your own property. The ditches are for the snow to be taken off the road and deposited on there in the ditches there. So. We can always modify the snow ordinance if you guys want to look at it and change some things. I mean, this was an ordinance back in nineteen eighty four. Maybe there's things we need to revisit. There's not a lot of things that I would. That, that I look through and see that, you know, our, our hours of service and everything else. And, you know, even in, in the policy itself says. We're not obligated to put salt or sand down or any sort of chemical that we do. I think over the years. It's almost been an expectation that we have dry pavement and our ordinance does not require us to have dry pavement. On a, in a big event, the ordinance does not say that we get the roads open full width. That says we open them the one lane through the event and then. Subsequently after that in the days, then we work on getting wider. I think a lot of people. Lose patience when a big event, everybody's on the move now, expect a wide open road. During a blizzard and our goal is to get at least one lane open. In a blizzard. Most people aren't, wow, I know people go to work and usually schools are closed, but I know people still need access, but we're gonna. A lot of our issues too, is we go out at four in the morning in a blizzard and by nine o'clock in the morning, you're drifted back shut. We're not gonna make it back there again. So sometimes we're. We're throwing money in the wind trying to do this. And that's why sometimes we will pull plows off and just save the money, even though we know people need to get back home. But. The ordinance also says that. People, individuals should drive for the conditions and make those kind of judgments themselves, whether they should be out, slow down. And look, I know we went beyond pushing snow across roads, but to reiterate, and I don't know, I thought we had this on the, on the website, but we can scan it in and have Joel put it on the website. So that people can view the, the ordinance a little bit.
It's, it's a resolution.
It's a, isn't it?
Okay, yeah, sorry. So, you know, there really would be no enforcement ability with a resolution. As far as like if we want to pursue this farther and do, okay, here it is. We're gonna, we're gonna give you one more. Second warning would be a ticket. So we couldn't do that with a resolution.
Well. You could say that you're depositing ordinance and obstruction in the right of way. If you're leaving snow on the road, that's an obstruction right away. And that is an illegal action and has nothing to do with snow.
Okay, so that. I don't know. That's what we, we chatted a little bit about this morning, what other counties do, but you know.
We could.
Grapevine, someone said, server, it kind of gets really tough on them. I don't know. Well, if you know anything, you can talk to sheriff too, or you can talk to engineers.
Just to see, I know what we've done in the past is RC will try to talk to them. If they don't listen to RC, he'll call us and we go off and talk to them.
Yeah.
We've had pretty good luck with that.
Yeah, we have, we have.
And I, I would prefer it to stay that way. It's just that, you know.
Sometimes some people need a reminder.
It's the first of the season. I mean, I get it, you know, and hopefully it'll slow up, but some people are continually do it.
But the, the, the biggest issue is you see, you keep stacking it up in your ditch and depending which side of the ditch, you're gonna end up with drifts there.
You're actually digging yourself a hole too, not just the county. You're only gonna end up with your, eventually if you pile up there at the end of your driveway across the road, it's gonna fill it in. I mean, people don't realize currently we're small stops, I guess, but.
Sure, Gordo has a smaller mobile ordinance. On my website, if you want to check it out.
And in the past, we have taken photographs of those just for documentation. So.
I mean, I guess. And I would hope the guy, if the guys see it, they would at least tell RC or you that says, hey, he's pushing snow on the road, you could address it.
I guess it depends on. You know, a lot of times in the past, we try to enforce something and then that individual will go back to the board and say, hey, this isn't fair. I guess it all depends on how hard you want us to hit it. Or. We don't want to have stuff in the middle of the road. People are gonna hit it. Whether it be chunks of snow or whatever freezing. And so we try to hit it that hard as far as leaving trails and stuff, but. We don't like the fact that they push it across the road and fill the ditches up because it just doesn't put any, leave any room for the snow on the road to go.
I guess, you know, I guess. But look into an ordinance, I mean, and, and they're making this part of this policy.
Just make.
Part of an ordinance or whatever.
Yeah, we could use this as our base and just make it an ordinance. And then if, then if you do want to put fines into it, you can put that in that ordinance.
Yeah, I like to. Give a little bit, but you know, you know, but people are continually doing it.
The biggest problem I see is like what you mentioned earlier, when they're in there tearing the road up, when the, the roads aren't really frozen yet, you've got rock mixed in now in the snow and then we end up. Rock always ends up in the ditch. I don't know that there's ever been a year that rock hasn't been ditched. We've had an open season where we don't blow snow. Rock sticks to the snow, snow gets taken off the road, no matter how much we leave on the road for snow, it still gets pulled. And so, but when you're leaving ruts in the road and turning around, throwing snow across the road, then it freezes.
Yep.
That's really hard on our equipment and just regular cars and trucks.
If you do an ordinance, get with Jeff, but make sure the wording is that. We don't have to identify which individual it was, but it came from the residence. So it's the residence that would be fine.
In case there happen to be somebody renting a property and it's not the landlord.
Or somebody else doing snow. We, if, how would we prove it? Why it do it? Right? We gotta have a first. So. There needs to be some bite in there because if you take that in, this, well, it wasn't me pushing it and we're gonna lose it in court.
Yeah, it hasn't been a real big issue, but it does pop its head sometime.
Yeah.
I think, I think we probably get one or two a year we have to go off and talk to. I know RC probably talks to a lot more.
It's usually the usual suspects.
I would probably, you know, especially even the guys that I, they do it all continually, you know, and that's.
And some people, some people might not even be aware that they shouldn't be doing it.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, that's why I'd like to have a little verbal conversation first.
Comes along, I guess.
Yeah. And I thought, I thought too, it was, I think, I think our Metro County has our policy or ordinance, whatever is there, says no depositing in the right of way. And this one's a little different, which I. Surprised it's a little different, but. We can review it again and. Updated, I guess. It's the eighties, mid eighties. I mean, it's no.
Wouldn't hurt to go through it and put a current date on it.
Reach out to a couple of. County engineers.
Having electronic documents, so the typewriter and.
Yeah, we do a little research with neighboring counties.
I think I'm taking long, so I know that, that the question's probably been asked on the engineer's service bureau website several times. I'll be at the engineers conference this week. Maybe I can have some discussion.
Yeah, just, you know, like I said, I'd rather keep them more personal if I can.
Yeah, that's how we've been doing it mostly. Now, same goes for in the springtime, we should, we should revisit the rocks getting thrown in ditches from fields. That's not. Proper either. And, and it's tough to chase everybody down with that, but right.
Right, anything else? Thank you, Rich. Drainage claims. Questions, comments, those. All right, there's motion approved claims, I'll second it. I'll favor I, I oppose. All right, DD twenty one West Maine monitoring report. Engage Mark Rinnflott to complete the report. This is an annual.
Five years and one year or two.
Okay.
So hopefully he's been out and did what he needed to do to check out the weeds.
So we need to do this every year? Can we engage him to do it until the reporting status is up?
Whatever you want to do.
This way, kind of, he can just, he knows to stay on it. You know what I mean? And then it's just done. When it comes this time of year, it's just done. Okay, I'll make a motion to engage Mark Rinnflott to complete the monitored reports through the rest of the time. Required by.
Okay, I'll second.
And there's a second.
Recommend, you said something about, what was it, thirty two bucks an hour or something?
Yeah.
Should there be? Should there be an increase every year or go with the thirty two for the duration or?
Yeah, go thirty two and then we'll address any increases. Future. Okay, there's motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll favor I, I oppose. Alright, Mark, take care of that paperwork. Okay, regular claims. Questions or comments? There's motion approved claims, I'll second it. I'll favor I, I oppose. Any reports? Motion to approve the report. I'll second that motion. Any special? There no, I'll favor I, sorry, I oppose. Your payroll eligibility, your salary changes?
I got one.
Justin should be done. There should be one coming up, Michaela, cause she's got her year up. That was just for her classes. Now she's got her probation period.
Alright, do you motion to approve the payroll increase for Justin North? I'll second that motion. I'll favor I, I oppose. What your license? No. Acknowledge second judicial district annual report. That's just basically where their funds are all spent and all that. Alright, I'll make a motion to acknowledge the second judicial district annual report. There is a second, any other special on? Hearing none, I'll favor I, I oppose. Alright, Kerry, Sherrock watershed. So. I was assigned to that. And they screwed up my email address, hadn't heard anything all summer. Finally got my email address corrected, got ahold of me. So Jim Hans and I went last week and made our first meeting, which they've had two or three other ones. That we didn't know about. So, but we had been getting a couple of guys, Russell, then James Iverson from. The water, soil, soil and water, had been attending. So they've been in, at least we've had some representation of North County. We're fortunate enough to be the second largest county next to Floyd County. We got to speak by about thirty thousand acres. But we have hundred thirty thousand acres in this watershed. And originally it's, it's was being built as not needing contributions. But what they're doing is they're going after a grant to the DNR, net match twenty five percent. And this will basically establish the district, the comprehensive plan. And then once that is all done, we can. Get a director and start actually applying for grants to. About watershed. So as of now, hopefully this is just a one time contribution. To, to get that twenty five percent match that they're eligible for a hundred thousand dollar grant. And most other, I think, water, soil and water did five hundred, which every county that's involved, basically what the going is. I think conservation board was gonna do five hundred. There's been some communities that were doing fifteen hundred. So. And then once, like I say, once this is done, then it's, yeah. All a part of, or then it's the directors going after grants and get stuff like that. So. So I guess my, my ask is that we do a letter of support to this, which will help encourage to get this grant. All the other members, even people that aren't members that are communities around have worked of support. They're not actually doing anything monetary, but because they're not members of, they're giving support and then asking for it to do a personal or a contribution. One time for now of fifteen hundred dollars. So is that possible?
Is there gonna be an agreement of some sort so that, you know, the issue we've had with.
Twenty eighty, there is. And that's, should be coming because they're, they're changing that now because. Butler County is going to be the fiscal agent. So they're trying to figure out whether it's Butler County or Butler Conservation, but. The conservation director is kind of gonna be doing the, the fiscal agent stuff. And actually, Russell's the name is our treasurer for this. So. But yeah, there will be, as I told them, I said, we're all gonna have to do it. If there's any monies coming from the county, there's gonna be a twenty eighty, just so you guys know. So yeah, they're working on that. Just get the fiscal agent stuff right. And then that will be coming back to us as well. So. But. So anyways, I'll make a motion to approve a letter of support and a contribution of fifteen hundred dollars to the Sherrock watershed. Also, okay. Motion a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll favor I, I oppose. Alright, I will, I've got the letter. I'll make all the changes in it and I'll give you a copy and then send them a copy. That's where you know. And then. I'm gonna work with a couple of communities, see if they will at least support it manly and graft in both. See if they'll, if they can give you money, fine. If not, at least support it to help get that grant. Cause that's the big thing is getting. Entire areas support it. So. Okay, resolutions, twenty twenty one dot twelve dot thirteen dot one. His resolution to approve Worth County participate in national opioid settlement. This is another one of those, I think, that more participation we get from everybody, the more they'll go after the opioid situation. And I believe most counties around us, you know, that region two meeting we were in, most counties around were a part of this. There's a couple that.
Floyd had, but I think they were going to.
Yeah, yeah, they were just waiting to see where, let the attorneys do all their work, but.
So at our last ISAC board meeting, there's between sixty and seventy counties that are part of it. And actually, ISAC is gonna reach out and ask for your all ninety nine.
Right, yes. And I know Jeff's kind of been working on this too, hasn't he?
Little.
So, taking a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty one dot twelve dot thirteen dot one, which is approving Worth County to participate in the national opioid settlement.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I will second that motion. Any other discussion?
That basically gives just Jeff the authorization to sign anything for you guys.
Right. Yeah, yeah, letting him take care of anything that would be county related. So. Yeah. Model roll call vote, maybe, stone, I, and Lowberg is absent. So that resolution will pass. Mark Tomlinson, security plan.
Hopefully you've got a copy of the new revised plan that came out. As a result of the security assessment, the first entry that was done in May of this year by CISA. Security committee was formed with members from the county staff. We went through the findings from. That report and. Added to and refined the security plan that we had changed it. Basically from a courthouse security to a county security because, you know, not every office that the county has is in. Basically from a courthouse security to a county security, because you know, not every office that the county has is in just this building. We have satellite offices and, and other offices and stuff, and they, they should all be covered under the plan to. Added, added some sections to it that weren't included in the original plan. Information from here, um, it's still not, I mean, the security plan itself is, is better than it was, I think. And I think that's security many feels too. Um, but there, it's still, there's always more work that we can do. Um, there'll be annexes that can be added to it. I know the sheriff brought back some information as far as, you know, we need to look at what happens after a. A large incident, you know, as far as recovery, how do you take care of the, the personnel? Um, you know, you can always have a continuity of operations and continuous of government plan that tells, well, how do you rebuild the, the infrastructure? You know, how, where do you get your machines and stuff like that to, to rebuild after any kind of disaster? But you have to look at the human side of it too, and I think that's what his thoughts were and stuff, and so that was good thing. We're working on that, but to keep the ball rolling and keep stuff going, this is what we've got now and so on. Unblown development, I think, as the years go on here, we'll be revisiting.
All have to, cause since I was gonna keep revisiting us, so we're not to keep revisiting that.
Right, and it's like, you don't, you know, plans that you just put on a shelf are, they're not. And one of the things in here too is, you know, one of the findings, or a couple of the findings is, you know, ongoing training of staff, ongoing testing of the staff. And so you're gonna see more of that, I think, going forward is testing, training and. And updating and reviewing and stuff, and that's, that's the way it really should be.
Yeah, that's why they're, that's why they're there, we use, you gotta revisit them, probably on an annual basis. So, oh, that's perfect. Motion to accept the security plans.
I'll make a motion to adopt the security plan recommended by the security committee.
Okay, there's a motion there. I will second it. Uh, any other special? Hearing no, I. I oppose. Top left corner too, where I can't fit my left hand.
Didn't specify the rehab center of the group though.
But that'll be a game base. Yeah, anything else on that?
Just whatever the Venus is available to sign. Get back to me a week.
Hopefully next week, maybe so. Okay, when was Bette Co? Melissa.
She's there.
Good morning.
Are you also?
Good, how are you? Um, I just, I'm gonna send you the link to the sites for Lois that I talked about last week. I put that, um, the water tower part, part on there, and since I did that, I got two phone calls. And then um, another uh, interested party that I talked to at CBN last week, or the week before. Um, they're just interested in looking at it, nothing solid, but um. Uh, one is a real estate developer and the other one is a construction developer. So I don't know if anything will, will follow, will follow through with that, but it's kind of nice to see that it's getting some hits on the website.
Gotta start somewhere, right?
Yeah. So then on Wednesday, I'll be in Mason all day at a administrative training for the long-term recovery group. And um, tomorrow I'm working on a housing project uh, with Nyacog for Manly. So, so and then next week I'll be at the Manly City Council meeting on Monday night.
Perfect, perfect. Alright, and then I did get your signs and they're at the Northwood Shed, and those guys will take care of them as soon as they get time, I guess, so.
Nice, thank you for doing that.
No problem. So, anything for Melissa? Alright, thanks, have a good day.
You too.
Uh, people's service, hi Chris.
Hi, I'm just here, just the, we've had some bad luck at the wastewater plant. We've had a uh, computer screen go out on the control panel on the main lift station out there. Uh, I couldn't control it. It was still working like it supposed to, but I couldn't control nothing. And so that was, we got that replaced, and then Zegger was there doing maintenance and the control panel on the generator quit working. So I couldn't control the generator, so we had to replace that last week also, so we've got two. Fluke things out of the, out of the blue, and they're not, you know, they're not cheap, I mean. I don't know if you've seen the bill for the. From quality flow, yep, that was like thirty eight hundred dollars, I don't know what the cat wants.
Did you get a surge or something, or what?
I mean, we always do, cause we're, we have dirty power, but you talk to Inter, uh, Heartland, they say your power is good, but. We have a search protector and it keeps track of the comments in there. The first year we were there, we had like twelve thousand hits on it, so, well, yeah.
Can we put in like a whole, whole building?
I have one.
Your system?
We're gonna replace it, cause it's not, it's bad now, so we're gonna replace that again, so that's another issue that we're gonna replace.
Is it just batteries, or you gotta replace the whole?
It's a bucket thing, I don't know what it is, and it's in the, it's in the main.
The main panel.
Main panel. It's that square D thing.
Yeah.
It's a bucket item.
We might wanna look at expanding that to a whole building.
Well, that's why I thought, well, especially that control panel, if there was something we could put in that control panel, they help just that panel. Cause our other control, other controller that runs the wastewater plant has a better backup with a, a search protector on it itself. But there's nothing on this lift station control panel.
Nothing, no conditioner or anything?
No, just the one that's in the, just the.
So I'm, why wasn't one put in right at the, right at the transfer switch?
Like you say, engineers don't spec it out, then I don't get, um, if somebody points it out, you know, and says, hey, we should probably do this. Yeah, I think that was the reason why that engineering firm doesn't work here anymore, but. As before we end, yeah, before Mark, so.
Well, one part that maybe, you know, when you're specing that up for replacement, look at, you know, spending maybe a little bit more money. A whole bit of conditioner system.
Okay, awesome, cause I mean, that's.
Yeah, and that's just at the lift station on the intersection there?
No, that's at the wastewater plant.
Oh, at the wastewater plant.
Yeah, so it flooded building one day, one day I caught it, it was running dry for an hour and a half. So yeah, that's a problem.
You gotta have, I guess, you gotta have.
Yeah, so, so you begin to build from quality flow for the controller and zigler for the, the, for the generator controller.
Alrighty.
What do you, what do you got right now from when the generator trips, I mean? Yeah, but you've got that three minute.
No, we've got it's, it's instantaneous.
Oh, the generator considering that?
Yep.
Okay, so it's just.
Ten second delay probably?
Yeah, do you need to stretch that out a little further?
Well, I mean, we had it the other way and we had more problems with alarm, so then we went back to it.
Yeah, re- realistically, you should have some sort of conditioner slash battery system in there that takes that load off until the generator, you know, smooths out. Cause I mean, you're gonna pop electronics left and right with just those, well, we. We did that, the sheriff's office when the transfer switch was, was popping, so.
That's why there's one on the main controller for the whole plan, there's a, they have the. Little lift station doesn't have.
Yeah, so as our. And then go into that one facility. How many times you lose one?
Yeah, other than that, we're okay out there?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Yo.
Uh, department heads, first things first, remind me I have an ARF meeting next week, right?
Sure.
ARF committee, which is pretty much all our department heads, right? Uh, on our next department heads.
Um, I will be gone Wednesday and Thursday, I guess, night stuff I've got to be working on for meetings and that. Uh, Friday I will be here either, because Justin North will be graduating from the academy, so we'll be down bringing him back. Whenever I graduated. Um, on my employee front, um, Margie volunteered to stay an additional month, because I have another employee that's gonna replace her that has to have a procedure and will be off for four weeks. So Margie decides she'll stick on. We did get ads in that out, um, trying to find, we'll have to hire two within the next.
So as far as IT side goes, we've got the, the firewall switch is gonna happen this week, so be prepared, we're gonna. It's been a while, so I'm sure we're gonna find some stuff, some legacy stuff. Uh, this weekend, Friday, I don't know if you folks have heard, there's a log four J vulnerability that just hit. Uh, the log or what we call log jam. Uh, it's an open source piece of software that uses, does logging for job applications. I know I'm blah, blah, blah. Uh, just realized that this thing gets most of everything, that's a good chunk of things that are out there. So we're gonna be picking up the pieces on this one, hopefully. Soon, I was working with Tyler, uh, Friday night into Saturday. Uh, and I can get into it over the whole meeting, but there's some issues there that we're dealing with. So there's probably some other applications we gotta watch out for. Yep, so cybersecurity rolls on.
Talking about that, did you see the insurance? It's effective January, that it's still two hundred fifty thousand dollars, is that, that wouldn't even cover?
It's a start, I mean, it's a start, and I'm still waiting for quotes. I don't wanna talk about it over.
I have the commission and seven a meeting this Thursday, six o'clock. We'll start some discussions on budgets, shelter agreements that we have assigned. Push out emergency action plans for the cities, encourage them to kind of review and update them, like they should be doing. Um, we're gonna review an AD policy that we developed, so we've been handed down one of those. And the county level safety meeting next Monday, also at ten AM. That will be the last chance for any department heads or, or county employees to give. Comment for any changes to the uh, safety manual. We've been, had that open for discussion and stuff for. Six months at least. Haven't really had it, I just. That's almost that one, and uh, looking to, you know, get that submitted to the Horace Supervisors in early January for the adoption is the official safety manual. And they're, you know, constantly tweaking that every year, I'm sure. You know, we have our safety consultant hired, you know, but.
Yeah.
Just remember that.
Other department heads? Alright, move on to supervisor's weekly work.
I attended the Upper Cedar Watershed District there, I resumed it, I guess, I didn't know if it was, it was good to go over there. Yeah, they sent Zoom link afterwards. Which is fine, I, we actually had a pretty good turnout, we had enough uh, show up and on Zoom to finally approve, well, like six months worth of minutes, I believe. So, uh, interesting thing, well, uh, when you were talking about some of the money, you know, given they uh. They actually don't have a fiscal agent yet for that board, and uh, they had somebody wanting to give money, so I think that's something we'll be addressing going forward. Talked about a lot of the projects that have been going on in the last six months here on the Cedar River, and a lot of good things happening there in the Charles City. What plans and things to improve the water quality, and then. I would guess with the governor announcing one hundred million dollars, I think, towards water projects, which that's what it's gonna go to, is like the Cedar and the Shell Rock. And then, uh, so having these boards in place, I think will be beneficial, maybe to utilizing some of that money, hopefully for some projects that we need to continue to improve water quality. So today, I also attended the fair board meeting the other night, just to. They always invite us and thanked us and kind of told them what we're, gotta go on your countywide, and so that's all I had of this.
I, uh, and uh, Sherrock Watershed. Uh, like I had mentioned earlier, in getting that going, but uh, one of the things about that too is they're uh, looking at. Working with or joining up with uh, Winnebago Watershed as well.
Okay.
Um, which.
They all join you, okay?
When they, if, if they kind of sistered up with them, basically, it would be. Yeah, like, it's. They, this is a tight area, I mean, and then it all ends up with the Cedar Watershed, so, so a part of that is like, uh. Lynn County Cedar Rapids has uh, watershed going down there, and they've got somebody full time that is liking what we're doing up here. And is hopefully looking forward to working with us, because everything that we do up here affects them down there, by, you know, so. So they may also be kind of a monetary sponsor as well with some stuff, because it is gonna affect how. It handles, or gets to Lynn County and Cedar Rapids. Oh my goodness, it's. Of what?
Yeah.
You know, what the Cedar Watershed is, you got the Winnebago Watershed, now you're pulling Shell Rock through and then. And then it, it joins up to the, to the lower Cedar Watershed, it's, it's a lot, a lot of water, a lot of ground covered, so. Yeah, exactly, so, it's a good thing going and uh, got a good group there, I think, will, will intend to keep it going, a lot of support there, so. Um. It was a, so. Uh, next week, where'd you see our uh, WHW meetings? Got changed, yes. January fourteenth, I think. We did not have a.
No.
I got changed Thursday morning. Um, I'll, I'll confirm that. I'll confirm that for you, but I'm pretty sure I'll look at my email or down here. That's it, see, as long as that one's on there, should be good. Okay, if nothing else, then I'll take a motion to adjourn. I'll second that motion, all favor I? I oppose, we hit as a juror, thank you, everybody.